Before we move on to the main business, I just introduce the officers sitting at the table in front of me. First of all, on the far right, Barry Devlin, our planning lawyer, followed by Beth Howland-Smith, the development and control manager, then Louise Yandle, who's the principal planning officer and area team leader for the southern and western area, then Rachel Callas, our principal planning officer, Elizabeth Sims, our head of planning, and seeing that the side for a bit later on is Philipus. So we move on to the agenda. Item number one, confirm the minutes of the meeting held on the 13th of August 2018. The bean on the table for half an hour is your wish, I sound him as a true record. Thank you. Emma, apologies for absence and declarations of substitutes.
We have apologies from councillors David Els, Brian Adams, Mike Band, Michael Goodridge, Val Henry, Dennis Lee and Stephen Mulliner.
Thank you. Emma, and again, declaration of interest.
Number received before the meeting.
Thank you. Number four, question by members of the public.
Number received.
Question from members, Emma.
Number received.
Thank you. Item six, performance against government's targets. Beth, it's all yours, please.
Thank you, chairman. So on page seven, you'll see before you the planning services' performance against the government targets on speed and quality. In both cases, we're meeting these targets and, in fact, exceeding these targets, and I hope you'll agree that this is very positive news. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you very much indeed. Moving on then to item A1 is W8 2017, oblique 1778, garden-style nursery, Raccosham Hill, Raccosham GU10, 4JX, it's on pages nine to 66. Proposal, the erection of 72 dwellings, including 26 affordable, following demolition of existing buildings with associated access, car and secure cycle parking, landscaping and servicing as amended by plans received on the 19th of March, 27th of June, the 1st of August, the 8th of August, 31st of August, the 3rd of September, the 4th of September, all in 2018. And I'd ask Rachel Callas to introduce.
Thank you very much, chairman. I'll begin by showing the location plan for the site. I've got you one in close-up just here and one in slightly more further out. You'll see the application site is located on the north side of Raccosham Hill, just south of the junction with Echo Barn Lane. I'll take you through some of the adjacent uses to the site. Next door, which is 66 Raccosham Hill, Stevenson's Engineering Yard formerly, is now being developed for residential development. And next door, just here, is where an industrial use, the sawmill. Current use of the site, it is currently under construction. You'll see dwellings, previously approved and subject to this application, are currently under construction. Previous use of the site before that was as a garden centre. Turning now to the site layout, which you'll see set out for you on screen. Total proposed is 72 dwellings, including 26 which will be affordable. Affordable units are just in this corner here and on this side, and on this side. I will show you that on a better plan subsequently. The majority of the houses proposed, well, the majority of the dwellings proposed would be two-storey houses with two blocks of flats as well, and again, I'll come back and point those out to you. There is a local equipped area of play located in the rear of the site just here, and there's a total of 165 parking spaces proposed. That's a mixture of garages, such as you'll see just here, driveways, fronting garages, and there's a few examples of on-street, formal on-street parking, such as fully affordable units at the front just here. This plan shows you in more detail where the affordable housing would be located. Two areas are highlighted for you in blue, so primarily focused in two clusters on the site. As the scheme's being built out, I'm able to show you a photograph of one of those units which has been constructed. Bottom right corner, you'll see one of the apartment blocks. You'll see it's two stories in height. This is located in the front right corner, and the very similar is proposed in the far-left corner. Apart from those two apartments, the remainder would be two-storey houses. Internally affordable housing provision, there's a total of 26 affordable units proposed. That amounts to 36%, which you'll note exceeds our policy requirement of 30%. Of those 26 units, there'll be 50% affordable rent and 50% shared ownership, and you'll see there's a range of one, two and three-bedroom units proposed, and as noted, that's a mixture of apartments and houses. I've got an example of what the proposed houses would look like on the bottom of the screen in black and white just here. Some of you will recall that permission has been previously granted on the site for 65 dwellings. That was a full permission back in 2015. What I'm showing to you on screen now is a comparison of the two block plans. This on the left-hand side was the previously approved scheme, and its focus is towards the rear of the site and shows you the dwellings that have been changed. Put simply, the primary purpose of this application is to increase the number of dwellings. It's an increase of seven market units. Those are all seven additional houses, and that's achieved through replacing what was previously larger detached units with pairs of semi-detached dwellings. Crudely indicated for you on this side where those additional dwellings would be. It's not in black and white, but you'll see it's circled, all the pairs of semi-detached properties that would replace the detached properties previously approved. To also, in terms of other changes to the scheme, the total number of affordable units, previously discussed, 26, that remains the same number as was proposed on the previous scheme, it's in the same form. Previously, that amounted to 40% of the total, it now amounts to 36% of the total, still in excess of our guideline, however. Other additions in comparison with that block plan, I'll show you on another screen, it's just off here, but there is addition of a pumping station. In addition, land stabilisation works are proposed between the rear road here and the ancient woodland. There's also a revised landscaping strategy. Neighbouring to the site, there is one existing neighbour which is in this area just here, so this is number 68 Raccosham Hill. His access essentially went through the garden centre and on to the main road, and his access will be through the development. His access is one aspect of the scheme which has been changed and widened just to provide more space, at the point he would have to go through that scheme. Take you now through the proposed street scene. Starting at the top, you'll see the proposed frontage on to Raccosham Hill. I have included in black and white below for you where, an extract from the previously approved scheme, where this differs from what's currently proposed. You'll see the two affordable units on the right-hand side and left-hand side of the screen. Here in the centre is the central internal access road just here. For any of you who have been past recently, the majority of this is near, certainly on the right-hand side, it's been built and is nearing so on the left as well. Key changes to point out for you, there are design changes. On this house just here, you'll see that detailing does change on the side elevation at first floor between the two schemes, and a number of chimneys vary slightly, so we've got an increase of two chimneys on the semi-detached pair here and a reduction of one here. I've just included below close-ups of that street scene, so you can see it in a slightly larger form. Turning to proposed site section A, got a plan for you here, so that shows you that the section is taken from the central access road running through the site and looking to the right-hand side, and I've included for you a proposed site section here on the top, and a comparison with the previously approved site section below. Again, you'll see there are subtle changes. For example, here, this is an example of where one larger detached property has been replaced with two semi-detached properties ahead above, and that's where the increase in dwellings is achieved from, from examples like that. You'll note there's a range of materials proposed across the dwellings, and they're all two-story in form. Similar setup again, I've showed, this time we're looking left from the internal access road, so again, run central through the site. Below, we've got the previously approved street scene, or street section, sorry, and above is the current proposal. You'll see some changes in the use of chimneys through the site, and you'll also see some examples where you've got larger detached dwellings again, which now take the form of pairs of semi-detached properties. Turning now to the proposed site frontage. On bottom left, you'll see, and you may well be aware, there's quite significant belted trees which runs along the front boundary of the site. When works commenced on-site pursuant to the previous permission, some of those works were done in breach of tree protection conditions, which has meant that there has unfortunately been some damage to those trees at the front of the site. As a result, officers have negotiated a revised landscaping strategy. In consultation with our tree officer, we have negotiated with the applicants a complete replacement of the frontaged trees, and the reason for that is the result of the damage to those trees and the expected life expectancy, whilst that feasibly in the longer term to retain those trees would not result in a desirable landscape frontage in the long term. The benefits of this replacement strategy means that they can be adequately spaced and secured up front. A piecemeal replacement over time would simply not achieve the same outcome. In terms of ancient woodland and protected trees, I'll take you to the middle diagram on your screen. You'll see a dotted line just here. What this is showing you is the boundary of the ancient woodland, so you'll see it is in quite close proximity to the proposed development. And this line just inside roughly denotes the 15-metre buffer which is recommended to keep development outside of. Contrary to the previous scheme, there are a number of areas where works are now proposed within that buffer zone. Most notably is a pumping station which is just here, and this is also shown in the top right-hand photograph, number one. You'll see this external wall that surrounds the pumping station itself, that is built within the ancient woodland buffer zone. Turning to the top left-hand side of the screen, you'll see a dotted grey section just here. This denotes an area of woodland which is a subject of a TPO. This woodland has been removed by the applicants and does form part of this proposal. In addition, I've infilled a pond just here. These are not works that were in accordance with the previous permission on-site and were done without, contrary to the advice of officers. What this proposal does secure, however, is landscape mitigation towards the rear of the site to seek to try to compensate for all the loss of those trees. Clearly, however, the loss of those TPO trees is permanent and they cannot be replaced. It is worth noting it's a subject of a separate planning enforcement investigation. Turning now to the slope stabilisation works, which you may make reference in your report. For those of you who recall the site or who've seen site photographs, you may be aware, it does, the land does steep very significantly from the back of the site where the garden centre activities end down to the woodland. What the applicants have discovered since going on-site to construct works of the 65 scheme is that there's evidence of land slippage, and actually that slope at the back is unstable. So what I propose as part of this application is stabilisation works to prevent further slippage into the ancient woodland, and also, of course, to ensure the stability of the proposed play area and dwellings and access road to the rear. That again is an area of work which takes place within the ancient woodland buffer zone, which ordinarily would be, prevent, development would be discouraging in that area. The report does go into some detail regarding the policy on that, and there's justification put forward by the applicants, but nonetheless, we do identify within the report that potential impacts to the ancient woodland and the clear harm in terms of the removal of TPO trees is a factor that does need to be weighed into the balance as a negative aspect of the scheme. It is, however, worth bearing in mind that without those slope stabilisation works and without that pumping station, the alternatives are the removal of dwellings and reducing the number of dwellings on-site for changes to the layout. Turning now to take you through some site photographs and to show you in a bit more detail what has been constructed on-site. I've got the proposed street scene for you on the top just here. On the bottom left, you'll see a show home just here and the front, and the proposed frontage on the right-hand side. This photo, I think, is included already, but that's one of the proposed affordable housing blocks. And a few further site photographs beyond the front of the site, as mainly under construction at the time the photographs were taken. On the top left, this is a view looking from the internal access road out towards the residential dwelling, Holt Pound Farm, which sits just opposite. On the top right, you will see the adjacent residential development which has recently been constructed. And on the bottom left, you'll see a view of the main road and the existing tree frontage. To now take you through the determining issues for the site, starting the matters of principle and technical opinion. In terms of the principle of development, it's worth noting the site does now fall within the built-up area boundary of the Farnham neighbourhood plan. That is a change since the time the original permission was granted, that's happened since then. Going to highway safety and parking considerations, proposal has been deemed acceptable and positive responses from the county highway authority, subject to improvements such as the relocation of the 30-14 speed sign, that's something which has already taken place. In terms of parking considerations, the number of parking spaces would exceed our standards slightly. The housing land supply, clearly we already have 65 dwellings on the site which contribute to the housing land supply, this would add a further seven and obviously contribute to Farnham's supply. Affordable housing, the proposed, the proposal of 26 affordable homes would meet and exceed our policy requirements. I've got highways and parking on there twice for you. There's a trees in ancient woodland, the report does acknowledge negative impacts in this respect, primarily the removal of TPO trees to the rear of the site, damage which has occurred to trees at the site frontage. One of the key opportunities of this application, however, is to secure mitigation, replacement planting and landscaping both at the front of the site and at the rear, which does deliver an improvement over the existing position of what's been, what has been done on-site. In terms of noise, noise mitigation secured includes an acoustic fencing on the side adjacent to the industrial use, and conditions are recommended in terms of contaminated land, flood risk and drainage, including to secure the proposed drainage system. In terms of infrastructure, you'll note there are head-to-term set-outs, and they will be secured through a legal agreement. Similarly, the effect on tennis-based Heath's SPA would be mitigated through contributions towards Farnham Park. In terms of biodiversity, clearly there are the adverse impacts in terms of ancient woodland are also relevant here. Sufficient mitigation has been secured to avoid adverse impacts on protected species. In terms of matters of judgment, which are asked exercise your judgment on, they are the impact on the area of great landscape value. At the time of, at the time the 65-unit scheme was permitted, it was acknowledged there would be, there would be some impact, adverse impacts on the area of great landscape value, and that's resulting from a change from the garden centre that was there previously to obviously substantial residential development. That remains the case with this application, however, the impacts would be not dissimilar to those associated with the 65-unit scheme, which already has benefits from planning permission. In terms of other impact on visual amenity, the overall design and appearance of the scheme is considered to be acceptable, particularly taking into account the landscaping which has been secured at the front of the site. In terms of impact on residential amenity, the key neighbours to the site are the new houses on the site just to the right. Officers are satisfied there will be sufficient separation distance to those dwellings, and also to number 68, which is a property which is accessed through the, through the site. In terms of standard of accommodation for future occupants, officers are satisfied the layout provides sufficient light, outlook, privacy for the proposed dwellings, and that the units would be a sufficient size. Turning to the provision of amenity and play space, a leap is proposed within the rear of the site. Policy does also require that a lap or policy guidance suggests that a lap should also be provided. This is not the case on this scheme, although it should be noted that in the 65-unit scheme, it was also the case that only a leap was provided and not a lap. Turning to housing mix, well, the key, the key outcomes of the change to, and the increase in housing numbers, and through changing from a number of larger detached units to smaller pairs of semi-detached units, is that you do have, we do have a better mix, which more closely accords with the SMA, and that's an increased number of the two-three-bedroom units rather than those larger three-four-bedroom units, and that's, that is a benefit to the application. If I can now turn members' attention to the update sheet. Key changes here to note is that there is a change to the project, the infrastructure project, which comes at the request, the council's green spaces manager. That's the same overall amount, but it just focuses the contribution on one project instead of two. There are updates to various conditions on here in terms, including plan numbers. Condition 28 to update the date and title of the ecology report. Condition 25 relates to the trigger point for the provision of the local equipped area of play, that has been revised to be later in the building programme. The applicants have requested us to review this condition because of the need for a construction site compound to be in that location, given its position on-site. The case was that it would be incredibly difficult to provide that earlier, earlier in the process. And there is a duplicate condition which has been deleted there as well. With these factors in mind, I turn you to the revised recommendation, A, which is that permission be granted, subject to the completion of an appropriate legal agreement by the 22nd of the Feb 2019, to secure affordable housing, planning infrastructure contributions, contributions towards Farnham Park Sang, a landscape ecological management plan in conditions 2 to 5, 7 to 10, 12 to 24, 26 to 27 and 29, as set out on the agenda report, as amended conditions 1, 6 and 25. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you very much, Rachel. We now move to public speaking and I'll ask Stephen Tremeth, supporter of the scheme, to step forward, and the scheme has been explained to you four minutes from when you commence talking.
My name is Stephen Tremeth and I'm the land director at Beale Homes. As you will be aware, we've started construction works under the original consent, and there have been a number of issues which have needed to be addressed in this application. So before I continue, I'd just like to start with an apology. I want to apologise to officers and to councillors for the areas that were made during the construction stage. We have not always followed the correct procedures, and this results in mistakes on-site and the overall delay in determining this application. We pride ourselves on being a responsible developer who look to work alongside the local community, and I'm therefore very disappointed that we've not managed to demonstrate that here. I can assure you this is not behaviour that we as a company accept. I'd like to thank officers for their patience and support in finding a suitable solution and resolution which allows us to deliver this site and its much-needed housing. We strive to build high-quality developments which complement the communities they join and provide places where people really do want to live. With the landscaping enhancements and the elevation treatments agreed with the council, I believe this would have been attractive and high-quality development we can all be proud of. I don't intend to repeat the content of the officer's presentation, but I'd like to make a few points to reiterate. The purpose of the application was simply to make better use of the site by altering the housing mix to one that is more suitable and more suited to the local needs, and this has been, as explained, through splitting some of the four-bedroom houses into three-bedrooms. We proposed no greater alterations to the original scheme beyond that, and at the early stage, it obviously had positive feedbacks from both officers and councillors. Whilst the form of layout remains almost unchanged, we are proposing a more comprehensive landscaping scheme as the officer's report set out. Sorry, as the officer's report set out, concerns were raised from the council's tree officer in the original application about the longevity of the frontaged trees. As part of this application, we've been asked by officers to replace these trees, and we've worked very hard with them to agree a suitable planting strategy that sees their replacement with well-established native species. This will ensure the long-term maintenance and overall enhancements to the street view along Raccosham Hill. At the rear of the site, following the grant of planning consent in 2016, we undertook further survey work and found the bank at the rear was completely unstable and in fact had slipped into the ancient woodland some time ago. We also found Japanese whatnot weed in this area, which does need to be remediated. The priority has been to remove the Japanese whatnot weed and find a suitable engineering solution which secures the bank and prevents any future harm to the ancient woodland. We've reviewed many options with officers, and we are proposing a solution that provides suitable stabilisation of the bank, requires no works within the ancient woodland and long-term protection of this woodland. As part of our site work, it is with some regret that some clearance works have been undertaken without formal approval. We understand the severity of this situation, and we have worked hard with officers to secure a suitable planting scheme which provides the appropriate compensation and enhancement. These include the planting of a mix of shrubbery, wooded species which enhance the biodiversity, and some larger trees such as oak and maple, and we see this as an improvement to the extent permission and enhancement to the existing situation. On this basis, we consider the application proposals comply fully with the relevant policies to deliver a high-quality scheme. I'd be happy to take any questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Tremeth. Members, before we move to the debate, are there any questions for the officers at this point?
Thank you, Chair. My first question is just regarding the breaches of previous conditions, so just my own clarification, we're actually asking for an expansion of the, of the original application and having to trust that the conditions will be kept on this one when they weren't in the previous one, is my first point. And my second question is, if we've gotten an extent investigation into breach of conditions, is it reasonable for us to be considering an application to expand on that original application, or is it not just best for us to wait for that investigation to conclude? And if we don't do that, what weight does an ongoing investigation have within this particular application discussion tonight?
Rachel or Beth?
Yes, thank you very much for those questions. It's worth noting that part of the reason it's taken so long for this application to get here is you'll note that there are no pre-com commencement conditions recommended on this, so by very nature of the works that are commenced on-site and some of the problems that have occurred, we've worked quite carefully to secure the details up front, so both parties know exactly what they're working to, both on-site at this very moment and on the report. So that gives us a lot more security as officers in recommending this. Clearly, we can't control what does happen on-site, however, if there are any further problems do occur, clearly our planning enforcement team are able to act and respond to that. However, as I say, we've, we have gone to considerable lengths to ensure that full details have been agreed as much as possible at this stage, so these are in compliance with the law. So these are in compliance conditions you primarily see on this application as opposed to leaving details to a later point. And part of that does reflect the stage of works on-site. Turning to the planning enforcement investigation, that is a separate standalone process and in the same way you're asking questions about that, that will need to take account of the outcome of this application tonight. However, granting permission tonight does not necessarily mean that it prevents action being taken in terms of the enforcement investigation. However, it's not possible to go into too many more details than that because clearly it is a confidential investigation. So if there are more questions about that, they can be directed to the planning enforcement team offline for us to advise you further. Is there anything else you wanted to add, Beth?
Thank you, Rachel. councillor Gray.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was really upset and appalled to read the issues about trees in here. I think we have a great problem in terms of recognising that the degree to which trees need protection. I'm amazed that the developer can get away with the things that are said in this. What I'm, that having said, what I'm after officers is telling me is that the developers have to their satisfaction, given assurances that they're not going to repeat this, and secondly, that the degree of remediation is in part penal so that they learn their lessons. And I don't mean that penal in terms of, I'm saying that it actually should in some ways be additional rather than just a replacement of the damage. I am very concerned about that and potentially concerned as to why we didn't stop the development of the site whilst these discussions were going on. That's my issues on that side, sir.
Rachel.
Thank you for that, Chairman, councillor Gray. In terms of securing additional compensation, I suppose is probably what you're asking, over and above what's been taken, I think probably the best example to give you is to look along the site frontage. We wouldn't sit here and tell you that every one of those trees along the frontage that exists at the moment is in a poor condition. Some of them are capable of retention in the longer term. However, in reflection of the additional damage that has been done to certain trees on that site, as I say, to avoid that piecemeal approach, we've obviously worked for quite some time to negotiate with the applicants to say, actually, we want a full-scale replacement planting. And I'd say that is comprehensive and that is, I suppose, an ideal, for lack of a better word, the ideal and best position we could be in taking into account what has happened. And I think that's also reflective of the landscaping that's proposed at the rear of the site. It's not a case of accepting the first iteration that's been submitted by the applicants by any means. We've gone backwards and forwards for quite some time to ensure that actually the planting that's proposed is the best that can be achieved under the circumstances. Clearly, it's one that we will be monitoring, given the position that's on there as much as we can do so.
Councillor Hymn. Question?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, looking really at the technical issues in respect of whether or not it is acceptable for us to agree to the increase in numbers. Obviously, you know, no one would be suggesting that we pull down the houses that are there or whatever, but if a redesign is necessary, can we include in that an increase in the numbers? Now, in respect of this, the first question is in respect of this being reliant upon sang at Farnham Park. I had a phone call from a land use consultant at four o'clock this afternoon who went to great pains to explain to me that Farnham Park was bought by Farnham Urban District Council through an Act of Parliament, which is the acquiring act with bylaws which restrict dog walking to on lead and that's due to the milk, actually the government's concerns over contaminated milk in the presence of cattle and where hay is being cut. And we know Natural England's definition of sang requires that dogs are allowed off lead, so, you know, it is overridden and although I know this is late and I wanted to put this in at this stage so that perhaps a solicitor could have a look and see whether it's possible for us to give us, for him to give us some advice on that today, because it's an important matter. So that's the first one. Does the, in respect of the acquiring act and its requirements there, does that prevent us from using Farnham Park as sang, because I've been told today that it does? Now, the second question just refers very simply to the Sweetman judgment, which it says that a full and precise analysis of the measures capable of avoiding or reducing any significant effects on the site concerned must be carried out, not at the screening stage but specifically at the stage of the appropriate assessment. And we haven't got that analysis, Chairman. There is no evidence in, so it's not an appropriate assessment, the document that's been called an appropriate assessment, but where is that evidence if we have it? And finally, the original decision on this, Chairman, was prior to the Sweetman judgment, when the council's approach was, and this was granted originally under the principle of the presumption in favour of sustainable development, and that's applied. And now, since May, the council has accepted that that principle does not apply, a presumption does not apply. So can you please confirm that in those circumstances, we cannot consider that the principle of development has been established and that we could lawfully take that forward to grant consent again, when in fact what we require is a complete appropriate assessment?
Thanks for that.
Thank you, Chairman.
So who's taking the question? Do you want a little more time, Mary Devlin or Louise?
I'll answer the second part of your question first. In response to the Sweetman judgment, an appropriate assessment has been carried out and this is supported by Natural England who have raised no objection to the proposal. In relation to the presumption in favour of sustainable development, I think you're talking about the fact that a tilted balance wouldn't apply because it is subject to appropriate assessment. I can confirm that an ordinary planning balance has been applied by officers and it is considered that the benefits would outweigh the harms and the proposal is in accordance with the development plan in that respect and so is acceptable. Thank you. I don't know if you can answer that.
Give any advice in terms of Farnham Park and its role that should lawfully play in the avoidance strategy, but the avoidance strategy has been in place and reviewed in two thousand and sixteen, signed off by, investigated in great detail by this council. Farnham Park is set out in one of the annexes to the avoidance strategy. I cannot in all honesty believe that there exists somewhere a private Act of Parliament or bylaws which frustrate the operation of Farnham Park and issue says an area of suitable sense of natural green space. I simply cannot believe that that is the case, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Councillor Jones. Anna Jones.
Thank you, Chairman. That photograph, that drawing of the road frontage, if the man's six foot, the hedge comes up to his waist and his head hits the bottom of the leaf, there's nowhere in the agenda that I've found that tells you how tall those trees are going to be that replace the key landscape feature of Douglas firs, which is in the agenda. And it says that, given the already limited life expectancy, twenty years, I mean, I call that a really good time for a tree. They've probably been there for loads of, twenty years is a long time. I still cannot understand why, that where the damaged trees are, if they are, if they're going to fall down next year, then they should be replaced, you know, like for like, because it does say it's a key landscape feature. Replacing Douglas firs with the odd oak that's only about twelve foot high and a hedge that comes up to his waist does not replace what is there. The fact that the foreman of the site should obviously, hopefully, is not working for Beale Homes anymore and because he obviously didn't do a good enough job, that, in my honesty, I don't believe that the tree planting scheme is anything like good enough to replace what is there damaged by the applicants. And it says also that the applicants have submitted the site condition report and the officers, the tree officer has sort of agreed, but it's obviously in the interest of the applicant that it's easier just to knock them all down now and replace them with some new trees that are going to, it'll be at least twenty years before they're anywhere near the trees that are there. And this is the biggest thing, I've got no problem with the houses at all, changing the four-bedroom, three-bathrooms into ones that are needed, but this whole thing rests on the damage that the applicants have done and what they think, and obviously, I apologise to the officers, what they think is appropriate, but in my view, the little bit of twiddling along the front with what is much easier for a bulldozer to come and knock back and plant some other trees does not replace the key landscape feature, which is actually in black and white in the agenda. Thank you, Chairman.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. First of all, to address the height of the trees, I mean, you're quite right, they're very mature trees and the replacements are going to take time to establish. It's not in the agenda report, apologies, and the estimate I've been given on the height is looking around fifteen metres in height for the height of those trees, they're semi-mature, but yes, they will take time obviously to develop and grow. I would emphasise that the proposed replacement scheme is very much something which officers have put pressure on the developers to select. It's not, it was not the initial proposal by the developers. On the contrary, the initial proposal was for much more what you described, a phased replacement and the odd tree here and there as and when they may well die. The difficulty with that approach is the spacing of the trees as such is that will be very difficult to get sufficient space between when one individual tree ties to successfully get a tree of maturity to have the space to grow. So that really restricts what you can achieve in the longer term. The other point worth emphasising is that by undertaking the works now, obviously it's much more within our control to manage and it's on, the onus is on the developer who have undertaken those works to rectify that damage through implementing that landscaping. Leave it until nine, ten, ten years down the line, you'll very much rely on the individual occupiers paying the management fees and those management companies to monitor that and undertake the work. So from a control perspective, this is much more desirable position. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Otis.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm absolutely appalled at your obvious disregard by the developers to Waverley Borough Council and planning legislation. Sorry. Oh, beg your pardon. It's obviously too late to protect and save the ancient woodland and the other trees on the site. The developer has said that he believes that actually, although he apologises, the site will be enhanced, but that perhaps is questionable. My question is, if I may, when did Waverley Borough Council learn of the disregard of the planning permission that was granted and when did it come to Waverley's notice and why didn't, why was the developer allowed to plough on regardless ahead to the extent of considerable and irreparable damage? Why was it allowed to continue at the site? Thank you.
Fine. We're almost getting into a debate, so would ask very much that we...
I'm sorry. I thought it was, I thought we were in questions.
Yeah, we are in questions and you've asked one, so go. Beth?
Thank you, Chairman. Completely understand what you're saying. Sadly, by the time it came to our attention, much of the damage had already been done and as is standard in most enforcement investigations, we work with developers to find a way forward and hold in abeyance any action pending some kind of remedial strategy, which is what the submission of this planning application has been. It's sought to compensate, mitigate the harm that has been caused. Sadly, we can't get the ancient woodland back, we can't get the trees back. What we can do instead is negotiate, which Rachel has done, a suitable landscaping scheme, which actually would be absent if the twenty fifteen permission were to proceed. So we're actually in a much better position in the sense of control. I would try to offer you some comfort in the respect of confirming that there is a very active enforcement investigation ongoing. It is completely separate to this decision-making process, but if you would like further information about that offline, I'm happy to fill you in. Thank you, Chairman.
May I come back very briefly? This site has clearly well underway in terms of development. We've already seen photographs of properties that almost look ready to be lived in. So it looks to me as though this site was developed a lot before it came to Waverley's knowledge or understanding.
Beth?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, you're right. I mean, and in fact, what they were doing was implementing the twenty fifteen permission so that they were able to do that in their own right, but the issues that we're discussing now came before the submission of this application but after the implementation of the twenty fifteen scheme. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
Councillor Liz Townsend.
Thank you, Miss Chairman. Are we still in questions or? We are. Okay, then I'll wait until the discussion starts.
Councillor Coburn.
I was really going to ask when we're going to start the debate, because, I mean, we're all appalled. I think we've made that very, very clear. Nobody's more appalled than I am, but I would like actually to debate this application, Chairman.
Fine, so would I. And in fact, we will move into the debate at this point and I think I will start, actually. I'd like to thank the officers for their report, which has obviously been very difficult, very time-consuming. I am more than a little surprised that the applicant, who's one of the top fifty companies, developers in the country, has made this series of errors. It's almost as though they rode into town into Farnham and Waverley and said, we do it our way. Not all the pre-commencement conditions have been met. The tree root protection areas have not been complied with. That's standard on any site, surely. TPOs ignored. The ancient woodland has been harmed already, we know that. The proposed substation and pumping station have already been constructed, therefore this application is in part retrospective, isn't it? Electric car charging. The applicant proposes a three-kilowatt trickle charging, however, the recommendation is a minimum of seven kilowatts as per the Surrey County Council guidance. That maybe is covered by condition four. The proposal, while not meeting the SMAR, to me is acceptable in a development some way from the centre of Farnham. I think it's a better scheme. This application for additional seven homes and as the previous application remains ex stamp, I feel this altogether a better scheme. It's not materially more harmful. The landscaping revision is conditioned under condition twenty-four is an improvement. We know the mistakes that have been made and we have heard the Bellway apology for that, but there we are. So I find the scheme for the extra seven homes to be more acceptable than the one that is ex stamp. So moving on.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, we are where we are and I do hate just going back over and over things, you know, we are where we are. We've got a simple application in many ways tonight because we've already got an ex stamp permission on this site and we know what they're going to do to try to mitigate some of the harm and, you know, as I say, we're all incredibly appalled and I think we've said it a hundred times already, so I'm not going to say it again. Interestingly enough, we say it was a garden centre, but of course it was a mature tree and shrub centre. It wasn't a garden centre in that sense and the trees have gone down to join Forest Lodge, which is just a bit further down the road, which is a garden centre, although it sells everything, as all garden centres do these days. But actually, the trees that... But actually, the trees that actually this site sold are mature species, that's what it... And we are talking mature, enormous great things. So I hope we really can get some mature trees on this site and get some landscaping that will help. Nothing will replace them, but it will help. This is a better mix. We thought at the time that perhaps, you know, the four bedrooms were a bit excessive. This was one of the very early sites that was in the neighbourhood plan, the first regulation fourteen consultation, and in fact, got permission before and was taken out of the list, although it's in the table to say that we support it. And in fact, I think we had more when we originally looked at the capacity of this site than the sixty-five, but, you know, that was what was granted. So I think the seventy-two here works very well. Notwithstanding all the damage, I have to say, as you drive past the site, the scheme looks very good. When it was first in, it looked very, as one of the town councillors said, very brown. I always remember the way she said it, very brown. And it was, you know, it was a very unimaginative palette, to say the least, but, you know, it does fit in well. Along this little bit, it is within the built-up area boundary. You've got the sawmill, there's a little bit of that is in the built-up area boundary. And then to the right-hand side, as you look at the scheme, we've got, as Rachel said, the Stephenson's Engineering Site, which has been nicely built out again in traditional materials. And the village of Reckisham has, you know, an extraordinary mixture of palettes, but it is a village, it is traditional. And it's nice to see that these actually sit well, I think, at the entrance. And I think, you know, what we want to define is the entrance into Reckisham, because one thing in the Farnham design statement and on into the neighbourhood plan is how people in Farnham like their own little area. You know, you live in the Bourne, you live in Hale, you live in Reckisham, you live in Webber. Wherever you live, that's dear to you. And I think, you know, when we're looking at reserve matters stages, we always talk about the character. This was a full application, and I think, you know, on the whole, in terms of the built form, has nailed the brief, as it were. So I hope when it's finished and when we have the replacement landscaping scheme, that we will have a development that we can be proud of. I think an extra seven here is probably the right decision from the start, really. You know, with hindsight, it's always a wonderful thing. And I think they're going to be much needed, much... Well, I certainly know already that people do like this scheme, you know, just people that are driving past. I know it's difficult on the three-two-five to see anything, because you're going, you know, all you're looking at is the car in front of you. But notwithstanding that, I really do think it's, you know, a scheme that we should be proud of when we've eventually got it done to the correct format. The applicant has apologised, that's all we can accept from him. We can't actually, you know, I mean, other than the mitigation, obviously, to put back. And I think we just have to accept that we will all be keeping a very close eye on this scheme. I should think there's a Farnham councillor that won't be, let alone the officers. So I think, you know, they know they'll be under scrutiny between now and the finish of this scheme. And I hope people will support it despite the bad behaviour that we've already seen and discussed. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Townsend.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At risk of saying it again, I'm afraid I will, the applicant has shown a blatant disregard for the constraints on this site. And although we're concentrating on the frontage trees, which I regret, it seems that the officers have had to negotiate some time to get the trees replaced. However, I'm more concerned about the ancient woodland and the impact on that. They've started building the pumping station, but the risk to the ancient woodland from the sighting of the pumping station has not been assessed. There is a risk of failure due to blockage, pump failure from these pumping stations, and if that should happen, then there will be undoubtedly some effect on the ancient woodland. We are talking about irreplaceable habitat here. It doesn't just refer to the trees, it refers to the soil, the fauna, flora, everything in there. And no risk has been assessed for where the sighting of this pumping station is in the buffer zone. If there is a problem with the pumping station, you have to get lorries in, the lorries have to be on a hard standing, the hard standing has to pump out all of the inevitable foul water within the pumping station. It is very regrettable that Beaulieu Homes have started building the pumping station without any kind of permission. However, this application is not just an increase of houses, it's to do with the slippage on the bank going into the ancient woodland, and it's also to do with this pumping station. And I cannot support the building of a pumping station within the fifteen-metre buffer zone of the ancient woodland. And I think it's appalling that the building of this has actually started, bearing in mind all of the errors, which they cannot be, they're not errors, they're a pattern of behaviour. The frontage trees, the infringement on the buffer zone, the filling in of the pond, and the TPO trees. And I really think it's disgraceful. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
councillor Ward.
Thank you, Chairman. I was taken with your initial comments about the builder having a sort of Wild West attitude to Farnham, because I think from what we've all said, many of us do totally agree with that, and I think it is terrible. And I'm very sad that enforcement was not done at a much earlier stage. And I am hoping that that will be a lesson learnt and that in future, a very close eye will be kept on this developer wherever it works in this borough, because I am... I think they're a disgrace. Your comment on electric charging points, Chairman, I know you're trying to preempt me because it's my bete noire, and thank you for that. I was really pleased to read on page eighteen that the officers had referred to the ill-advised suggestion of trickle charging and had gone on to proper charging as recommended in the Surrey guidelines. However, condition four on page fifty-three goes back to what I call woolly wording again. It just says, "An agreement will be made, and we'll have some negotiations, and we'll do something." If we have a policy, which we've laid out pretty clearly, why isn't the policy in the conditions when we actually improve them? Because we have, and I will remind officers for some time, had certain conditions which haven't been negotiated the way we as a committee expected them to be. So I don't understand why, when we have a very, very clear understanding laid down at the beginning, that we have woolly wording in the conditions. Why don't we put the proper wording into the conditions and then we don't have problems One oh six monies. I was reading some lovely little notes about one oh six monies, which keep on saying they should be near the site where the one oh six monies are being taken away, and they are to ameliorate harm in the local area. Yet I see one oh six monies scattered around all over the place and having very little bearing to Reckisham, which I do confess I live in, but I don't think I need to declare an interest for that, because I'm a bit away from this place. So I was quite surprised at that. Screening, I think we've probably beaten to death, but to have a few saplings stuck up in place of mature trees, I don't think is particularly wonderful and not really very acceptable. And just a question that will delight the councillor on my right. We go on and on about appropriate assessments, and appropriate assessment has been done. I've never actually seen an appropriate assessment. Would it be possible either to stick it in the papers, show me where it is if I've missed it, or could I have a copy so I can actually read what an appropriate assessment is deemed to involve? Thank you.
councillor Follos.
Thank you, Chair. I'm also not going to go back too much on this, but actually, I think if... I actually agree entirely with councillor Townsend on this one, there are actually more material things that have been harmed here. And I think the issue that's actually been highlighted actually by officers is that actually the developer hasn't exactly come to us in a contrite fashion after the fact and offered up to deal with all of these things. It sounds like you've actually had to put some, quite a lot of effort into actually forcing them into doing the right thing in this instance. So I actually think if we either should be waiting for the outcome of the investigation, unless, of course, this is all that is going to be the consequence for this developer. Is this application literally the consequences of the outcome of an investigation? Or will you find... Are there other things your investigation may find or may do that is extra to this? And if there is, I think actually we should defer this while we wait for that investigation to conclude.
Thank you. Elizabeth Sim.
Thank you, Chairman. Perhaps I could pick that up, councillor Follos. I think it's really important that the committee remember, there are two processes here, and colleagues have already made reference to it, but it's really important that for purposes of this evening, as planning committee, you're looking at this planning application on its planning merits and coming to a conclusion, having regard to the development plan, the final neighbourhood plan, and indeed, any other material planning considerations. Clearly, there are some things that have gone wrong, and a lot's been said this evening, and the applicant has apologised for it. But they have set out what their compensation, proposed mitigation is, to enable you to take into account that mitigation and hopefully find this scheme acceptable. So it's not the role of the planning committee to be satisfied that you're sufficiently punishing them for having been in breach of planning control. That is not the role of the planning decision-making process. There is a separate process, which you have powers, which your enforcement team carry out for you, to assess the breach and then come to a conclusion what action should be taken. And as Beth has already said, that's clearly a separate investigation, and a lot of the information around it is as normal, is in confidence at this point in time. So before you is the planning application with the considerations that they've submitted. And to be honest, all you need to be concerned about is whether or not you're satisfied that the detail of the scheme, in terms of the housing provision and that which is put forward to mitigate any impact, is sufficient. So I hope that's helpful, Chairman. Thank you.
Chair, may I come back on that very quickly, very, very quickly? If we were to change the context of this to say, offering the applicant a loan, and yet they were being investigated for fraud at the same time, it would be material to whether we would actually then offer that applicant a loan. So actually, I know we're supposed to separate the two, but actually, my concern is not that we punish the applicant, it's that actually we've got assurance that they will actually meet the conditions which this new application actually asks for.
Elizabeth.
Thank you, Chairman. I think all I can say is, this is no different to any other planning application assessment, in that in any case that's submitted to you, you accept the proposal that's submitted and the expectation on the part of the developer that they will meet any conditions that you impose on the permission. So as you know, planning authorities do not and cannot police every development. It is regrettable what's happened here, and we will work closely with them to ensure there's no further breach. But it wouldn't be appropriate to withhold permission simply because you're not sufficiently confident that they will comply with their conditions. You have to go forward on the notion, if it's acceptable in planning terms with those conditions, the onus is on the developer to comply with them. And you're back into the world of, well, that's good if they do, and if they don't, sadly, we may be back as to where we are at the moment in rectifying the breach. But hopefully, lessons have been learned, and we certainly won't be. So I hope that's helpful. But it really is about, is this scheme acceptable and is the mitigation enough to set aside any concerns on impact?
There was one further question that you didn't answer, unfortunately, which was, is this the extent of the enforcement action? Is this application it, or could there be more things done as a result of the investigation?
Beth.
Thank you, Chairman. Without going into too much detail, no, this isn't all that there is as a form of, you know, not punishment, but this isn't all we can do negotiating a new scheme. What's happened has led to a criminal investigation, and there are criminal sanctions available to us. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much indeed. councillor Hyman.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I did want to actually come back under the questions, but it doesn't really make any difference in respect to the response in terms of whether an appropriate assessment has been carried out. And of course, I fully appreciate that online, Waverley is putting documents, normally four-side documents or so, which have appropriate assessment written at the top. But the law defines the content of an appropriate assessment, and I brought this up three weeks ago at the Western Planning, Chairman didn't get any real straight answer to it. But I'd like, if possible, for us, a listener, to check case C forty-three oblique ten, that's Commission against Greece, where it states that it cannot be held that an assessment is appropriate where information and reliable and updated data concerning the birds in that spa are lacking. And there is no information on the bird, so it's not an appropriate assessment. And of course, I quoted from the Sweetman ruling earlier on. We don't have the information on the mitigation, whether the mitigation is effective. And there has been a recent ruling, a Netherlands ruling as well, which says the same thing, I understand. So, you know, I'd like to, just for the officers to confirm that that is what that ruling says, and that quite obviously, because it's not in there, if you go and look at it, the assessment that we've been given is not an appropriate assessment, because the law says it isn't an appropriate assessment, for the very same reason as the Greeks were found wanting. So as far as I'm concerned, Chairman, I mean, it is very nice to hear apologies in this chamber, we don't hear it from anyone else, so I thank the gentlemen for that, because it's not an easy thing to do, no one else does it here. So it was very refreshing. I don't... I'm not going to comment on sincerity, because I don't really know. I mean, you know, I don't want to judge on that. And I think it is very disappointing what's gone on, of course, and the gentleman knows that. But as far as I'm concerned, we have no AA, we cannot grant extra homes. We've been told that our decision is, is it acceptable in planning terms? Only if we have an appropriate assessment, and I'd just like you to confirm, without telling me that Natural England and everybody else says it's okay, because actually, these legal judgements say that you and Natural England have been wrong for all these years. So please don't give me that rubbish.
Thank you.
I just want to know, have we got an AA in terms of the law? Has it got the bird numbers in it?
Louise. Thank you very much indeed, Mr. Devlin. So the answer is yes. Turning now to councillor Gray.
Thank you, Chairman. I think enough's been said about the mistakes here. There's a lot good about what's being put forward here. I'm minded to support the application, but I would like to see some changes. Councillor Ward made the point about charging points, as you did, Mr. Chairman, but we have not proposed a change to condition four, and I'd like that done before the end, so that we make it properly covered. I also think that in relationship to the changes to condition twenty-five, I would like the officer's opinion, whether there's anything else needs to be added, because this wonderful leap area that we're going to leave for this estate for many years to come is going to be soiled, polluted by basically the site in there. It's going to continue longer, so are we adequately covered to make sure that that land is put back into its condition? And if I remember the site visit, concern was expressed about the location of the leap in terms of potentially dangers going down banks and other things. So can we have assurances that the layout of it is suitable, that the conditions will be applied to bring it back into a safe condition for our children to play in it? And I think taking what councillor Townsend has said on the pumping station, and why can't we... I mean, we're retrospectively agreeing this, but shouldn't we be having conditions in there which basically improves or looks again at the access to that pumping station? It's not as it was originally intended. There must be an agreed and appropriate access, so it doesn't do any damage. That pump out is covered, that repairs to that pumping station is covered, and that updates to that pumping station. It's not where it was intended to be, therefore, officers should have something in this planning application conditions to make sure that you've got the wherewithal to make sure that it doesn't do any damages to the ancient woodland. Those are my three points, but condition four, condition twenty-five, and the pumping station. Otherwise, I'm happy with the application. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You want to come in straight away, Rachel, or Louise?
Thank you, yes, thank you for those questions. There are a couple of changes which might address any old queries in terms of those conditions. I'll start with the electric vehicle charging points, I appreciate it's already been raised as well as a point. We have got agreement, although it's not reflected in here, from the applicants to provide the higher or the improved faster rate charging points. We're just waiting for the formal paperwork to come through to confirm that. But in terms of tightening the condition, what we could do is specify the minimum charging point to accord with the Surrey guidance. We could tighten that condition up to be more specific in terms of the speed that we're looking for and the number of units to accord with that guidance, if that would be, address that concern. Turning to the play area and the leap, one of the plans which we've secured in quite a lot of detail is the land stabilisation work. a lot of detail is land stabilisation work, so one of the key benefits will be to make sure and ensure the stability of that play area. Together with that legal agreement, we'll cover the management of that play area in the longer term, and that's quite a stringent means of control which we have to ensure that actually the applicant and the long-term management company who's ultimately responsible in the longer term do obviously provide that and manage it in an acceptable manner. Turning to the pumping station, what we could do to address your concerns, Lee, it's worth noting that the access itself, sorry, this isn't the best of plans to show you, I'm just going to move to a different one. This is the pumping station just here, and that which you've seen on the photograph. It is in a different position to what was previous. I don't think I've included that on the comparison plan, but it's roughly about here, so it's further back in the site. So the access road is the other side of, further away from the ancient woodland, as opposed to protruding further, but that does provide a suitable existing point of access for them to access and manage both the pumping station and the substation, but if it would help, you could propose that a additional condition be added to cover the management of that pumping station, and that will cover the details as to how it's managed, how it's accessed, what vehicles are used. And obviously, that's a matter that we could review along with Surrey Wildlife Trust, as relevant experts, and also the lead local flood authority, who have that expertise in drainage, so that would be my recommendation to secure additional control in that regard.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I would certainly endorse the changes to condition four, and I welcome the advice on the pumping station, I think that would be extremely useful. Just could you clarify on the leap? My question was, have we got enough powers to make sure that that play area is actually going to be decontaminated and brought back? That was my concern. I accept your point on the management company, on the ongoing, but it was just a question of how basically contaminated would that be, having been a site office? We know what site offices are like, they're not particularly clean and pleasant areas.
Rachel.
Thank you, yes. Yes, we do have a range of conditions on specifically concerning contaminated land, and what we will require from them following completion and for all parts of development is a verification report, so they will have to demonstrate to us that the contamination and remediation measures have been fully complied with, and that the dwellings and the development is safe and suitable for use, as I say, and in the longer term, it is the legal agreement and the management plan which would assist, thank you.
Just come back, do you want me to propose changes now to the fore and then, or will you come up to the end?
We'll come back at the end, if we may, Counselor Gray. We have four more councillors before we get to any recommendation. Counselor Deane.
Thank you, Chair. I'm just going to stick to actually the officer's report, rather than get sidetracked. Page 20, Surrey Wildlife Trust, it says, they should present appropriately detailed evidence based wholly exceptional reasons for need to build within the 15-metre buffer zone, I don't think that's been done. Pages 28 and 29 talk about the mix of houses, I accept they are a better mix, but they still don't comply with our SMA, we either have a policy or we don't, in my view. The bits that really concern me, pages 32 and 33. Page 32, the start of the third paragraph, it talks about the first floor tiling, it says it's not extended around the first floor, which leaves prominent blank elevations, and they do slightly erode the sense of identity as a scheme and overall quality, so allowing a scheme to actually have less quality. The next paragraph talks about the two clusters of affordable housing, I think that is totally inappropriate to have them in clusters, we've had this discussion numerous occasions here about, is that going to socially isolate them having them in one area? So I think that's totally wrong, in my view. Page 33, where it talks about the impact of existing trees, the sort of the start of the third paragraph, three-quarters way down, it says, the council's tree and landscape officer has expressed concern that report does not fully acknowledge the likely extent of damage to the frontage trees. And it then continues to talk about the pond, which has obviously been filled and without planning permission. When you turn over the page to page 34, the end of the second paragraph, it finishes off saying, this could never fully mitigate for the loss of the TPO woodland. So I agree with my colleagues on that. And then turning to page 35, again, the start of the third paragraph, it talks about the 15-metre buffer zone, and it says it would fall within the buffer zone, and I think Rachel said in her presentation, well, the only way to avoid this is to reduce the number of houses. Well, actually, what they're trying to do is increase it, so we're creating that issue. And the next paragraph, the last two sentences, the applicant has provided no information relating to exceptional reasons for built development incurred within the 15-metre boundary along the northern edge. And then the next paragraph, the last three sentences say, appropriately, has not been appropriately justified such to comply with section 41 of the National Environment and Rural Communities Act and the MPPF and standard advice. I'll swiftly move on to the next two pages, 36 and 37. Third paragraph, about four lines down, it says, for this reason, the proximity of the pumping station to the woodland itself does not cause for concern. But then at the end, it says, officers cannot be satisfied that no harm has occurred to the ancient woodland. And then when page 37 says halfway down, given the harm to ancient woodland that's been identified with paragraph 175 of the MPPF, there is a presumption against the granting of planning permission. It then goes on to say, well, the damage has already occurred, so we need to weigh this in the planning balance. So what it really is telling me is, well, we do it and then beg forgiveness. And any mitigation actually never, ever gets it back to what it should be. Page 39 talks about, there are six dwellings that fall below the minimum space standard, whether it's two square metres or whether it's 20, my view is, it falls below it, and we often talk about size and layout of schemes and amenity and health and wellbeing of future residents. So that causes me a little bit of concern as well. We've talked about the leap, but obviously, we've got a lap which is policy LRC1, and there won't be one, so clearly it's in breach of that. There's other bits and pieces I could raise, but I think between what people have said, I think they've been raised. Finally, I think there's another one which it says about a condition, but I can't see the condition, which is page 49, which is the 110 litres of water per day. It might be I've just missed it, if I have apologies, but I can't see that as a condition. It says it should be a condition, but it's not in there. Thank you, Chair, has been finished.
Thank you very much. Counselor Inchfort.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, points I was going to make have largely been covered, but it does relate to the pumping station, we aren't just here to decide whether or not there should be a few more houses, we are also being asked to approve the position of the pumping station, and in my view, it is not acceptable for it to be sited there, and I can't avoid the suspicion that the developer decided to put it there, start work on it, assuming that we would then have to grant permission for it, and I feel very uncomfortable with that. Thank you.
Counselor Townsend.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Within the MPPF, it does actually say that the permission should be refused unless there are wholly exceptional reasons for the loss or deterioration of ancient woodland. And I don't feel that any reason has been given for the re-siting of this pumping station. You know, previously, it was in another position, I presume outside of the 15-metre buffer zone, and no reason is being given for the re-siting of it. One can only perhaps guess that it was because perhaps of odour, noise, and maybe the risk of pollution to residents on the site, that they'd moved it backwards. So what I'd like to know is, what is the reason for re-siting it, and what exceptional circumstances exist to allow this to be built so near to the ancient woodland? Thank you.
Counselor Nuzzi.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Most of the questions which I wanted to ask have been answered, already been used and answered by Rachel, so thank you.
Thank you very much indeed. Counselor Hyman, finally.
Chairman, yes, I mean, I do share all the concerns that others have done, but I'm sorry to come back to the question of an appropriate assessment, because we've been told we've gotten an appropriate assessment, I've looked it up on the web here. Can you put it up on the screen? Is it possible for you to answer Counselor Ward's question by putting it up on the screen, please? Because I can only see the draft here, there might be a later version that I can't download, but I can't download it to see, by the title, that's possible, but there is no bird population numbers in this, what I've got in front of me, certainly not, and there's absolutely nothing in respect of the evidence that the mitigation's effective, so we don't have an appropriate assessment, unless you can show me on the screen, there is, Chairman, then I have to suggest to all members that we need to abide by the law, there's no AA.
I think you've already had the answer, Counselor Hyman.
No, no, I'd like to see it, please. I've been told there is one, and there clearly isn't, Chairman, and I think this is very important, that we're not misled into making the wrong decision, and I hope you'll back me on that.
Thank you very much, your question is noted. Mr Devlin, do you want to come back, or Louise?
Thank you. I can assure members that the appropriate assessment has been carried out, it has been approved by Natural England, it is on the file, and we would be happy to forward you a copy of that appropriate assessment following this meeting.
Sorry, we need it now, before we make a decision, Chairman, it is the law.
You've had the answer from the officers, and I respect that answer.
Do you want to take those amendments first?
Counselor Upton.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Just an observation from me on this stage, having picked this application up quite lately. Page 39, in normal circumstances, we have a breakdown of a table showing the accommodation and the areas, and internal areas of accommodation. We don't have one on this, we have a statement, and I have great difficulty working out what houses don't meet and what do meet requirement, I just would like, in future, that table that we usually see, enabling us to do a proper compare, comparing of properties and areas presented in the reports in future. Thank you.
Hopefully, when Local Plan Part Two gets up and running, we'll have that all there for us. Counselor Coburn.
I just really wanted to clarify something, Chairman. If we refuse permission because of the pumping station for whatever reason, presumably, they can just build the four-bedroom houses they've already got permission for, and we lose all that advantage of actually having houses that are more suitable for the local area.
Louise.
Yes, that is correct, and if I can pick up on a point that Counselor Gray made earlier as well, the 65-unit scheme that was granted was in advance of the adoption of the local plan, and the mix of housing was quite far away from what our SMA recommended. This scheme actually brings it closer in line with our SMA, and actually provides a better mix of houses to better meet our identified need in Farnham. And if I can also just pick up on one other point that Counselor Gray said, he commented about the condition regarding the 110 litres of water a day, I do apologise, this has been missed off the recommended conditions, so if members are resolving to approve this application this evening, then I would also recommend that we add that as an additional condition. Thank you.
Counselor James.
Thank you, Chairman, for allowing me to come back. The substation obviously is of concern, on page 35, it says, the applicants have indicated that a change to the originally approved position, which was obviously further down, is necessary due to overhead high-voltage cables due with the adjacent newly constructed Stephenson's Engineering Yard. So I don't understand, therefore, where the overhead cables are going, new ones from a new build, that it's affecting this site at all? Either they were originally there and they're not being moved, or the new build on the right-hand side has taken high-voltage cables across this site? But if that's where the high-voltage cables are going, then obviously, the pumping station can't go under there, but I don't believe that they've changed the overhead cables.
Thank you for the question, that is correct, they are the existing cables, so they're not actually new. What appears to have happened is that once they've got on site and surveyed and really looked through the requirements, it's later transpired that they couldn't put it in that location. As yet, it's both because of the position that the overhead cables which run from, you know, there's a substation you may be aware of, just in this corner just here, as well as one for development, oops, and they run in this direction, so that's restricting where the pumping station can go. And furthermore, the development next door does also pose a restriction on where exactly they can put that. Thank you.
Can I just check with the officers? If we were to refuse this application, we would lose the condition four and 25, the access to the pumping station, the conditions, all the other bits. Surely, we have tightened up and we are moving nearer the SMA figures of granting of permission a couple of years ago was also not following the SMA exactly, but this is a lot closer to it, so surely, we're in a better place with this recommendation. Louise?
Yes, I can confirm that, thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Townsend, do you want to come back finally? Nope? Fine. I think we need to look at condition four and tightening up for the higher rate of charge, the condition 25, the legal stabilisation of the play area, access to the pumping station, and the condition to manage that pumping station in perpetuity, and condition on the water rate. Counselor Gray.
Can I just come back on the leap? I think we had a satisfactory response from officers, to my mind, because they said the contamination conditions they've got in there covered my concerns.
Thank you. Louise, have I got that all correct?
So yes, we had answered the question on contamination satisfactory, so you didn't need additional one to do with that, thank you.
Fine, and the condition four and 25, you're all happy with all those? Sorry, 25, we've already got, but four and the access to the pumping station. Counselor Ward.
Thank you, Chairman, yeah. It's the wording in four that causes me concern, we're just saying, you know, pop in a few electric charging points. If I can refer councillors to page 78, we have some much more suitable wording there, and if we look at condition 12B there, I would propose that the condition in this application should say, electric vehicle charging points, providing a minimum of seven kilowatts for every dwelling, and similar communal charging points for blocks of flats. That would keep me happy and would pin it down quite well and avoid the willyness that's there, and I'm amazed it's there when I find in the next application, we have much more suitable wording. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Rachel.
Yes, we could certainly add those specifics to that condition.
Let's go to the recommendation then, please. Revised recommendation A, that permission be granted subject to completion of appropriate legal agreement by the 22nd of February 2019 to secure affordable housing, planning infrastructure contributions, contribution towards Farnham Park, SANG, a landscape ecology management plan and conditions 2 to 5, 7 to 10, 12 to 24, 26, 27 and 29 are set out on the agenda report, and amended conditions 1, 6, 25 are set out on the update sheet.
And the additional changes that you've...
And the additional changes that we've already talked about, condition four, the electric charging, access to the pumping station, and the water rate. Those in favour, please show. Those against? Abstentions? Thank you. Permission is granted. Thank you. Recommendation B is on the... Recommendation B, that in the event of the requirements, recommendation A are not met, permission be refused. Please show those in favour. Thank you very much indeed. We now move on to A two. WA twenty fifteen, oblique two-two-eight-three. Land on the west side of Green Lane, Badshot Lee. It's pages sixty-seven to one hundred and eighty. Proposal outline application for all matters reserved except for access for the erection of up to one hundred and five dwellings, thirty-two affordable, together with associated works as amended by a design and access statement received on the ninth of November twenty sixteen. Amended drainage information and FRA received twenty-eighth of April twenty seventeen. Amended plans and additional information received on the seventh of July twenty seventeen, and amended location plan received on the ninth to the eleventh twenty seventeen. Additional certificate B received on the twenty-fourth of the eleventh. Louise Jandle to introduce.
Thank you, Chairman. Those members that were on the planning committee last July will recall that at that meeting, members resolved to approve this application, subject to the section one oh six being signed within six months of the date of that resolution. This was not refused in line with the resolution in order to work proactively with the developers, in order to give the applicants time to resolve the issues, having regard to the fact that this site is key to delivering the requirements of your newly adopted local plan, as this is an allocated site for around a homes, and furthermore, it is also an allocated site in the Farnham neighbourhood plan, and it's therefore key to meeting the aims of the local Farnham community as set out in their neighbourhood plan. So as I've said, the joint planning committee resolved grant permission on the twenty-sixth of July, subject to the section one oh six agreement being completed. Now, since a lot of time has passed since that date, there have been a number of changes in circumstances since that time, and this is the reason why we are bringing it back for your attention today. The first change in circumstances was when the land title was investigated as part of the section one oh six agreement, there were thirty-one separate parcels and thus many different ownerships. It has taken some time to rationalise the title and catalogue all the parcels with accurate plans, so that an acceptable and practically enforceable section one oh six is now ready for completion by all the parties. In addition, during this process, it was discovered that an inaccurate site location plan was submitted, with a small area in the centre of the site being omitted from the site plan. An amended site location plan and ownership certificates were received and reconsisted on. This raised no new material issues over those already considered by the committee. However, it is noted that in response to this renotification, Farnham Town Council amended their original response, which was an objection, to support the scheme as it was in line with their local plan, neighbourhood plan, apologies. And I'd just point out on the screen where the error was. There was just a small parcel of land here in red that was outside of the application site, and this one on the left is the newly amended one, which includes the entire site. The third change in circumstance since that time is that the Sweetman judgment was issued. Now, this has meant that an appropriate assessment was required in order to consider if there would be an impact on the SPA. An appropriate assessment has been duly carried out, which concludes that the proposal would not impact on the SPA, subject to securing a section one oh six agreement for contributions towards Farnham Park, SANG, and towards SAM. Now, this appropriate assessment has been looked at by Natural England, and they have raised no objection to the proposal in this regard. The fourth change in circumstance is that part one of the local plan was adopted in February two thousand and eighteen. There are no policies in that plan that would alter the conclusions of the committee back in July, however, it is noted that this site is an allocated site in that plan. And finally, the final change in circumstance is that the revised MPPF was adopted in July two thousand and eighteen. Again, there is nothing in this document that would alter the original conclusions of the committee. The test, therefore, for members this evening is that whether any of the changes and circumstances that I have outlined warrant a different conclusion. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much indeed. Louise, now we have public speaking, and I'll ask Cliff Watts to step forward, sir.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and good evening, councillors. We objected to this application due to the overdevelopment of the site at thirty-two dwellings per hectare, and the use of two-point-five-storey houses and three-story apartment blocks. This density and type of accommodation is more suited to better-served edge-of-town locations, and has no relationship with the surrounding built environment. It does not conform with the design and layout requirements of policy FNP fourteen B, and results in the inability to provide sufficient parking even at the minimum standard demanded by policy H four. This policy is now replaced by sustainable transport policy ST one, which states at point nine, developers' schemes should make appropriate provision for parking, having regard to the type of development and its location in accordance with local standards. This gives officers and this committee the opportunity in force meaningful parking provision on a development without being constrained by the minimum standards applied under policy H four. Developers simply saw this minimum standard as their preferred target. The site is not well-served by public transport. The nearest bus stops are four hundred metres away via darkened alleys, or six hundred metres via well-lit roadside paths. The site is also surrounded by very busy roads. According to the twenty-eleven census, local public transport usage is eight percent, and cycle usage one percent, the lowest in the borough when journeying to work. The same census tells us that car ownership is high at ninety-three percent, and car journeys to work represent seventy-seven percent of the total, higher than the borough average of sixty-seven percent. Nothing that this or any other development can do will alter the situation in any positive way. The roads will become busier and more dangerous, and bus travel will remain inconvenient. Cycling will remain a weather-dependent leisure pursuit. Including this site, we now have three developments in and around our village, providing up to two hundred and sixty-eight homes, all with inadequate parking provision for the real world. This development threatens to push that problem to the next level. Recent applications have prompted a discussion about charging points for electric cars. We have to accept that the car will remain very much the preferred method of travel. Although we are disappointed to lose yet another of our open spaces, we accept the principle of development on this site. It is the quality of that development that is now our main concern. This application for up to one hundred and five homes, which apparently cannot be provided without the use of totally inappropriate buildings, we think this is an opportunity to send a clear message that when the reserve matters application comes forward, it should be of a much better scale and density to reflect the neighbouring environment. It should also provide sufficient parking to fulfil the requirements of policy ST one that reflects the real needs and daily lives of the prospective occupants. If it cannot fulfil these basic requirements, the application should be rejected. I thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much, Mr Watts. Members, are there any questions, or do we move straight to the debate? Sorry, councillor Dean.
It's not a question, it's just probably a condition which I think probably has been missed out, the one again about the water, one hundred and ten litres. Again, if I've missed it, apologies, I can't see it. And I think it's right that we secure that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Members, comments, debate? councillor Hyman.
Yes, Chairman, just to say that on this one, again, I've looked up, I've got the appropriate assessment in front of me, it's got no information in it whatsoever, so it's not an appropriate assessment, and I know there's only two of us who voted in favour of the law last time, but, you know, members should. In fact, I'm wondering whether I should go out and phone the police now and ask them to refer you to Wildlife Crimes Unit, it's ridiculous, isn't it? Can you put it up on the screen, please? Put the appropriate assessment on the screen, please, and show us, because we have to see.
The officers have already given their statement, I accept it.
We require evidence, it's the law, Chairman.
They are, indeed. Thank you, Mister Devlin, I totally agree. I have made my statement. councillor Ward.
Just to get the agony over with, Mister Chairman, condition twelve B, can we amend it, as I previously stated, which I'll quote for the record on this particular application, to say electric vehicle charging points providing a minimum of seven kilowatts will be provided for every dwelling and similar communal charging points for blocks of flats? Thank you.
Page, can you...
Page seventy-eight.
Thank you very much.
Condition twelve B.
Thank you. councillor Coburn.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, as the officers have said, you know, this is an allocated site, and it is like all our allocated sites in a very sensitive area. We are blessed in Farnham, as I'm sure other towns are, with healthy communities who are very keen to get involved in what happens in their community, and when developers work with that community, it produces much better results. We've seen it time and time again in this chamber, and I think Mister Watts has got it absolutely right. We have a field here, and what we put on this field has to be acceptable to the residents of the local area. Parking in any part of this area, as Mister Watts said, is impossible. It is so tight, and we would be letting the community down if, when we come back to the reserve matters, we haven't raised some issues at this point about the height of the building and parking, because quite frankly, where it is, we cannot accept two-and-a-half stories on this site. I really don't think it would remotely reflect the aims of the design statement or of the neighbourhood plan. Yes, development on this site, yes, we'll see what comes in, nobody has any idea yet there at reserve matter stage, but I do think we need to put some red lines in, and parking is so essential. There is nowhere else to park. People who are living in these houses will have to park near their houses, and there will have to be extra parking, because there always is. We can't turn the clock back, we are living with cars. They will get better, they won't get any smaller, and we've still got to put them somewhere. So whereas I accept the principle of this and supported it last time, will support it this time, I can't stress enough how much the developer has to work with the community between now and the reserve matters stage. What, we've... Can I carry on a minute? Sorry, I got a bit put off there, there were so many conversations going on. Right, we put an informative in, if I remember correctly, at the previous application, and I want that informative, please. Can we have a really robust informative about the heights of buildings, the design of buildings, and parking? Because if we don't, we're going to get something totally inappropriate in this site, which won't sit neatly on this site, it will be inappropriate, and that is against everything that's in our design statement, our neighbourhood plan, and indeed the local plan. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much indeed. Louise wants to come back first.
Thank you, councillor Coburn. Yes, I think it would be absolutely reasonable to put on an informative, drawing the applicant's attention to the waverly parking guidelines and to the Farnham design statement, and outlining that we would expect any reserve matter scheme to be in accordance with both those guidance documents. Thank you, Chairman.
And also to involve the local association, residents' association. councillor Nasen.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. That's what councillor Coburn has said, a hundred percent supportive, plus I've worked with the neighbourhood over there, and they want development in that area, but their demands are decent, that it should look at least decent, and they have worked with other plannings and developments, and they have worked perfectly, and their demands are a hundred percent right. Thank you.
Agree with that totally, it's worked well. Anyone else, or do we move straight to officers? Have you any comments on that recommendation? No? We move then to the recommendation. Recommendation A, that subject to the applicant entering into appropriate legal agreement within three months of the date of the committee resolution to grant planning provisions to secure the provision of thirty percent on-site affordable housing, contribution towards SANGs, education, infrastructure, SUDs, management, maintenance, play-space provision and maintenance, open space management, maintenance, contribution towards off-site play-pitch improvements, off-site highways and public footpath improvements and travel plan, and subject to the conditions and informatives, permission be granted. The additional conditions on water and electric charging, and the informatives to include the Farnham design statement, car parking...
In accordance.
In accordance with our policy.
Yeah.
With the waverly policy and the Farnham neighbourhood plan. Those, sorry, councillor Townsend, do you want to come in?
Sorry, I was just going to say, was there also an informative to work with the local community?
Thank you. There is an informative already on, if I can draw your attention to page eighty-six of your agenda report. This wording was actually specifically requested by the committee back in July last year, and that requires the applicant to engage in pre-application discussions with us, engage in community consultation in the development of the design and layout of the proposal, and again, ensure that reserve matters have particular regard to the Farnham neighbourhood plan and the design statement. Thank you.
councillor Gray.
Yes, I'd just like to make small change, I think it was mooted, at least to the parking standards. I think the concerns that members I've heard around here is that this site has very special parking problems, and what I'd like to see is that when they come back at a detailed stage, that they properly justify the parking, and if that means it's got to be slightly above because there's no spill, there's nowhere else to go, then that is, but it must be a minimum of, and I would then trust the officers to argue with the developers at the appropriate time. Thank you.
And I can assure you councillor Coburn agrees with that totally. councillor Coburn.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Yes, I mean, you're absolutely right, councillor Gray, there is nowhere else to go, you know, short of stucking them up, you know, there is nowhere else to go, and it's not good enough to, you know, have an approximation, you have to actually build something that works, and therefore the parking really has to be above and beyond, it really does.
Thank you very much. I've read the recommendation, you've heard the extra bits and pieces that we've put there, the officers have made notes on that. Those in favour of the recommendation A, please show. Thank you. Against? Abstentions? Thank you. And recommendation B, that in the event of a section one oh six agreement is not completed within three months of the date of the resolution to grant permission, permission be refused. Those in favour of recommendation B, please show. Unanimous, thank you very much indeed. Thank you, members, permission is granted. Move to item B one, I don't know if the public gallery is moving on or not, okay. Item B one, WA twenty eighteen, zero eight three zero, University Creative Arts, Fotherna Road, Farnham, GU nine, seven DS. The proposal erection of five buildings provides student accommodation comprising three-story and four... accommodation comprising three storey and four, three, two, three storey buildings, three four storey buildings, together with internal access, car parking, lighting, landscaping and associated works, following the demolition of existing buildings as amended and amplified by plans received on the eighth of June twenty eighteen, twentieth of June twenty eighteen, twenty second of August, and additional information submitted on the fourth of September twenty eighteen, and I ask Philippa Stan to introduce this.
Thank you, Chairman. The application is for the demolition of the existing main hall and the erection of five buildings to provide student accommodation to provide two hundred and fifty-two new en suite bedrooms at the university for the creative arts. So this slide shows the location plan. The application site is to the north west of the UCA campus. The site currently comprises a quadrant of two storey brick buildings known as main hall, which are here, which are used as student accommodation and staff offices, and an area of hard standing currently used for car parking. Other built form within the application site includes the Elaine Thomas Library, which is here, Hotfield House over here, and the Film and Media Centre, which is currently under construction, which is located roughly there. The site slopes down from north to south with a six point five metre variation in land levels. The campus is bound to the north and west by open fields, residential properties to the south west, and a public car park to the south east. Permission has recently been granted for the erection of one hundred and twenty dwellings on the field to the west, which is over here. The closest residential properties to the application site would be the existing student accommodation to the east over here. External residential properties are well separated from the application site, the nearest ones being down here. The site is accessed via the existing access from Faulkner Road, which runs along the southern boundary of the campus, which is down here. I've provided an aerial photograph to show the location of the existing student accommodation, kind of in more detail here. The public car park at the heart is here, and the Crandall Lane development is here. So in a bit more detail, the existing site plan shows the location of the Film and Media Centre here, which is currently under construction, and Hotfield House, which is, provides staff office space, and the main hall, which will be demolished as part of the proposal, and also the existing access from Faulkner Road is here. So I've provided a few photographs of the site. Photograph A is taken from the south, from the existing access road that runs through the campus. Photograph B is taken from the north, looking towards the existing main hall across the car park. C is taken from the west, looking across the car park to the existing student accommodation, and D is taken from the east, looking towards the existing main hall from the access road that runs through the campus. Photograph E is taken from the west, along the access road through the campus towards the Elaine Thomas Library, which is the building with the curved roof there. Photograph F is taken from the north, which is the field adjacent to the campus boundary. G is taken from the north, looking towards the library and the main hall, and H is taken from the east, looking towards the existing student accommodation at Castlefield. So this slide shows the proposed site plan. As I've already said, the application is for the demolition of the main hall, which would be located where these three blocks, is located where those three blocks would be proposed. So the scheme proposes the erection of five buildings to provide student accommodation. Two of the blocks would be three storeys high, which are the ones to the north of the site, which is on higher ground, and two of, sorry, three of the blocks would be four story towards the front, which are these three. The scheme also includes the erection of two external single storey bin stores and laundry rooms with open roof terraces, I'll show those in more detail shortly. The scheme also includes the alteration of the existing car park layout, which reduces its size but formalises its spaces. The scheme also provides parking for one hundred and twenty-four bicycles and a range of hard and soft landscaping. So the block plan shows the proposed scheme in more detail, and on here I've shown the location of the bin stores here and here, which, as I've said, would have roof, sort of open roof terraced recreation space for the students, and disabled parking would be located on the lower ground, sort of the lower level ground towards the south of the application site. I've provided a proposed street scene along the access roads that runs through the site. I've provided a visualisation of the Film and Media Centre as it is currently under construction, and the southern elevation or the front elevation of block one there as well. So there, I've just provided the elevations of block one, as the blocks are similar. Yeah, those are the elevations. This is block one, which is a four storey block, and there are obviously two, three storey blocks proposed to the north of the site. On the proposed block plan, I've just sort of detailed in on one of the floors, because the floors above are similar in composition. Each floor would comprise two cluster flats on each floor, which would have either four, six or eight bedrooms per flat. Each flat also has a communal kitchen, living dining room area per flat, and a central stairwell, lobby, and the four storey blocks would also have lift access for disabled students. So I've provided a couple of visualisations here that show the blocks in position. This, the visualisation of block two shows the bin store and the terrace landscaping that would be provided as part of the scheme. This is another visualisation that would be the view from, looking from the east towards the west, along the access road that would run through the, that currently runs through the site. You can also see the location of the proposed cycle hoops for secure cycle storage. Just to pick out one particular part of the application, so the site as existing has provides three hundred and eighty-nine parking spaces. These spaces are not marked out at present. The proposal would include two hundred and fifty-eight spaces, which does constitute a loss of one hundred and thirty-one spaces. The applicant has provided a detailed transport statement and travel plan, and it sets out that currently there is a high level of unauthorised parking by shoppers and town centre workers, and as part of this scheme, they would look to implement a travel plan with a number of measures to, to address the loss of parking. As part of this, they've also accounted for, through the measures which I'm going to set out, that one hundred and sixty-one spaces would no longer be needed. So that, doing, some of the travel plan initiatives are electronic entry and exit barriers to control who is able to enter and obviously leave the site, a reduction in permits for staff and students to control the number of people that are able to park on site, a scheme for car sharing for students and for staff. They would implement a formal layout of the parking spaces so that parking is sort of better laid out and the space is sort of better used on site. They are proposing to this, to provide a discount on bus travel for staff and students, a real time travel information board so that students and staff can get real time information on, on the next buses and trains etcetera, and as previously mentioned, there would be cycle hoop provision for secure storage of bicycles. So turning to the determining issues, the matters of principle and technical opinion are the principle of development and impact on heritage assets. The application site is when the, within the developed area of Farnham, with the wider campus adjacent to the conservation area. The proposal would contribute to a recognised housing need within the borough. Impact on highways and parking, officers and the county council are satisfied that, with the reduction in parking, having regard to the travel plan initiatives and actions. With regard to noise, air quality and dust, biodiversity, flooding and drainage, the relevant consultees have been consulted and have raised no objections subject to conditions. This includes the provision of electric vehicle charging points as per condition ten. In terms of infrastructure contributions and the effect on the Thames Basin Heath SPA, the recommendation is subject to the completion of a legal agreement to secure infrastructure contributions and contributions towards Farnham Park. In terms of accessibility, three of the proposed blocks would provide lift access to all floors. Six accessible bedrooms are proposed, as well as eight bedrooms for visually and orally impaired students. The landscaping circulation has been designed to address the extensive level difference within the site. Members are asked to exercise their judgement in relation to the following matters: design and impact on visual amenity, standard of accommodation having regard to the size, light and privacy, privacy for prospective students, the provision of amenity space, so amenity space in this scheme is in the form of communal courtyards, but it's acknowledged that the site is within easy reach of public open space within the town centre, impact on residential amenity with the nearest residential buildings being the student accommodation to the east. For the reasons set out in the officer's report, the application is recommended for approval as set out on pages two hundred and twenty-one to two hundred and thirty-two of the agenda report. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Philippa. Now we move to the ward councillor, councillor David Beeman.
Yes, thank you very much, Chairman, yes. I'm speaking tonight on this particular application because it's in the ward which I represent, which is Farnham Castle. I would add that I am a member of the youth Farnham society and a member of its planning committee, which has expressed concern over the design of this particular scheme, although personally, I have to say that we have to recognise that this is just basic student accommodation, which has been designed to the best possible within financial constraints. And I would say, and in fact, the university has met the Farnham society and tried to meet as much as it could within its, the constraints within its operates. So I would say that although, yeah, we'd like a perfect world, buildings that might win wards everywhere, but there would be a cost to that, and I think that would be unreasonable to put on the UCA. The second point that I'd like to make in this very brief statement is the travel plan. There's not a proposed travel plan, this travel plan is actually now in implementation, in fact, and I think that ought to be recognised, because I know that many members here who express concern, in fact, at the sort of loss of car parking spaces. The university, the UCA have taken this to heart, and in fact, the platform is implemented now, there is already a twenty percent discount on local buses scheme, and they are restricting car parking passes, so it is in fact in operation now. So they will more than achieve that. So if anybody has any misgivings about the car park, the car parking provision, I think that can be allayed. So I want to say, Chair, I hope, to Chair, that this will be, the recommendations of others will be accepted.
Thank you, councillor. Members? councillor Deans.
Just a very quick point, I mean, anybody's had children or gone through university themselves, if they had two daughters, they'd have been pleased to have new accommodation, and that looks like that, they've certainly had far worse than that. Just two very minor points, we're talking about one hundred and twenty-six secure cycle parking, which is condition nine. My only concern is if we reduce the car parking, that means students are more likely to have cycles, and at the discount rate, only one in two will be able to have a secure place to put their cycle. I just think that number's a little bit low, and I would have liked to have seen that higher, because we're encouraging them to use cycles and anything else, but we haven't given them sufficient, you know, one in two. And my final point about the car parking, I hear everything my colleague has said, so thank you, and condition four, I think, covers it. I suppose, my only question is, because it says in accordance with the approved plans, so not having seen the approved, those, what they actually say, it talks about barriers, it talks about having number plate readers, so, and all that, is that within that approved plan? Because otherwise, the condition doesn't actually make sure that they do that. So just like a little clarity on that. Other than that, that's it, Chair.
Thank you very much, indeed. Do you want to come back, Philippa, or shall we move to councillor, oh, Louise?
Just to make a comment with regards to the cycle storage, they are provided as Sheffield style hoops, so you can get one either side, but in fact, you can park even more than that, I certainly know, I cycle myself, if you can't find a cycle space, then you can still get next to another bike and actually attach more, more bikes to it than they're intended to attach to. And with regards to the travel plan, we are satisfied that all of the measures that we have outlined will be secured, and that is part of the legal agreement, so that will go into the legal agreement, that will be secured in perpetuity. Thank you.
councillor Coven.
Yes, thank you, Chairman, and congratulations, Louise, on your knowledge of cycles, an example to us all. Yes, I felt so sorry for the applicant, really, when I saw the officer's report, nothing wrong with your report, Philippa, but just the pictures, really, you know, and I'm so relieved you've got the visuals up there so that people can see it's not unremitting black, with just sort of tiny bits of light. I mean, it has been, it's a constrained site, but it has been well designed in the internal bit, which is obviously what the students are going to concentrate on, it's going to be good. There's two hundred, there's a net gain of two hundred and seventeen, and we reckon that frees up into the local market area, seventy-two approximate market houses that will be available for rent for other people apart from students, because the students will be living in comfortable accommodation on site, not having to make the journeys from Aldershot or wherever else they go and rent to avoid paying the high rent of the seventy-two houses in Farnham. But I think, you know, given the constraints on this site, given the need, I actually think these are going to be really good. The previous bit, the student village, has been, you know, great success, and that was some time back now, I can't remember when that was, I'm sure this will age equally as well, and the landscape in which, again, I don't think perhaps these visuals do justice to, I think it's going to be really quite, although it's again restrained and constrained, I think it will actually add to this site, which sadly for an artistic institution, has been a little bit unappealing in the past, and it's lovely to see the more modern additions actually enhancing the site, so I think this is really good news for the town, and we love the students because they really do keep the town going. You know, it's lovely in September when they all come back, it's like a breath of fresh air, it really is.
Thank you. councillor Hyman.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I'm the other board councillor for Castle Ward, and did go along to the briefing open day that they gave us, and addressed a number of these issues with them that have been raised by residents and others. The lack of car parking or removal of car parking certainly is a great concern, but I was very much reassured by what they said about a travel plan, as councillor Beeman has said. I note on page two oh nine, halfway down, we've got provision for future auditing and monitoring of the travel plan. I think I simply have to take it on trust that that's there and it will work, and we'll have to make sure that that's done properly regardless. I think, you know, I don't know, don't know whether there's a guarantee in that, there's no guarantees in life, but it's the same with, I'm not overly taken with the design, to be honest, I would have hoped the university for the creative arts could produce a masterpiece for us, but it's just flats, I'm not a designer and architect, and beauty's in the eye of the beholder, so I don't really think that we should object to something that's, I think is good for the town overall on those grounds. I think as councillor Coven says, life isn't perfect, but I don't know how much better we could do with this. I'm also not sure student accommodation creates any harmful use of the spa, I've got no objection on those grounds either, so I think I can support this one, Chairman, I think it's good. Thanks.
Thank you very much. councillor Nozze.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I was there on the open day when it was all happening, and I spoke to, with one of the vice chancellors, and other vice chancellors also liked that proposition. I said for less pollution, making the town more green, why don't we have the cycles like the Guildford University has? And two of the vice chancellors totally said, if the council wants it, we would like to do it, and put the cycles everywhere in Farnham to work on the Guildford cycles. And they agreed, and I further on spoke with the chancellor as well regarding it, so why can't we have that and make our town more greener? And I perfectly support all the buildings and everything, because it is beautiful piece of work, and the students are always there, and I think my kids, one of my kids would end up over there as well. Thank you.
councillor Townsend.
Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Just one query for the officers. Condition 15, the verification of the SUDs. We have had this, which I'm very glad to see that it's standard now really on most applications, that we are verifying that the SUDs are being built in accordance with the drawings and the schemes. However, there's some additional details that have crept into this condition, that this must demonstrate the drainage system has been constructed as per the agreed scheme, and this part in brackets, or detail any minor variations, which, which isn't normal for the SUDs verification. And I just wondered what was the reason for this? And also, who will assess what minor variations are? Thank you.
Louise.
Thank you chairman. This wording of condition 15 was suggested by the lead local flood authority, so Surrey County Council. I think it's really to pick up if there are some minor changes that happen during the course of installing the SUDs system, that they can be picked up at this stage. And both us as local planning authority and the lead local flood authority as consultee would have regard to the verification report, and we would assess any minor, sorry, any minor variations as part of that process. Thank you chairman.
Councillor Foroski.
Chairman, yes, thank you. I really feel very passionately about this, because I've seen some of the work that this university have done, and it's absolutely brilliant. And I think as a borough, we should be proud and celebrate and enhance and embrace this excellent university, because what it contributes to the town is phenomenal, as Carol Coburn has just said, you know, having all these young people in the, in the town centre spending their money can only be a good thing. I would also like to add that my thanks to the officers for organising the members briefing, which was hugely beneficial to allow members to ask some of the questions that haven't been necessary to raise this evening, because they were clearly pointed out during that process. And it allowed us an opportunity to find out as much as we can about this project. All I would say, that it is a constraint, it is a constraint site, but I think they have done the best they can, given the constraints, and I think this is an excellent proposal. I'm really proud to have this university in the borough of Waverley, and I fully endorse and support the recommendation before the officers. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Barmout.
Thank you chairman. Well, I've said in the past, my family, or one element of my family have used this, this establishment for so many years, I'm totally supportive of any improvements and changes that are going on. But I have a query with regard to, a small section about refuse and recycling, storage and food waste collection. None of these accommodations will attract any form of council tax, and therefore they will not be, I don't believe, provided with any form of service from Waverley to collect the materials or the food waste or anything else. And we are stipulating certain conditions, where I would have thought that they would require their trade waste collector to actually stipulate the sizes of bins and types, and they've actually stipulated what size they want to use anyway. But we're stipulating colours and a range of things. And I don't believe it's in our remit to do that, because we're not able to provide that service at present. We don't provide services to commercial organisations. And this, because it's student accommodation, rented accommodation, which is, where students are not paying council tax, we don't, we as a council don't get any form of benefit.
That, I would ask the officer, Louise again.
Students are exempt, this is out of planning's remit, so please just take what I say with it, with the, you know, some caution. But students are exempt from council tax, but that doesn't mean that the council won't collect their, their refuse. Of course, you can have students living in a, in a house outside of the university campus. I can remember when I, when I was a student, I was living off campus, but, and we didn't pay council tax, but of course our rubbish was still collected every week by, by the local authority. So I think that would operate in the same way on this site. And my, sorry, my colleague Barry is pointing out that the college would pay council tax as a business as well. Thank you.
Thank you members. I think we can move to the recommendation, if there's no further comment. And with just one additional informative, do you want to talk about bicycle informative at this point, Louise?
Yeah, so councillor, it was recommended an informative regarding offsite bicycles that we could put on for the university to consider at some point in the future.
Thank you very much indeed. So recommendation A, that subject the applicant entering into an appropriate legal agreement to a provision of contribution towards environmental improvements, contributions to saying at Farnham Park, recycling containers, travel plan and offsite highway improvements, and subject to condition informative, permission be granted. Those in favour, please show.
That's unanimous.
Unanimous. Thank you very much. Recommendation B, that in the event of the requirements of recommendation A not met within six months of the date of resolution to grant permission, permission B refused. Those in favour, please show.
Yeah, that's unanimous.
Unanimous. Thank you very much indeed. Permission granted. And that concludes our meeting all. Thank you very much.